Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Board Meeting is now in session. Let's have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. So I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Travis McCoy. Eric Canooty.
Here.
LaShae Brooks.
Here.
Julie Swiven. Renee James. Mary Davis. Brian Colton. Kimberly Jackson.
Here.
Arthur Hamilton.
Here.
We have a core and present with four members. Okay, let the record reflect that the two alternates are voting members today. Dismissed. Any additions and deletions to the agenda? There is one addition underneath General Discussions, room number all seven. Just a brief description of Resolution 124-13 by Ms. Stubbs. It really pertains more than the City Council, but it's for informational purposes for this board as well. Motion approved minutes from July 11th.
Zoom.
Second.
Second.
Call the roll. He has it too quick for me. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Is roll called for the minutes?
Yes.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
LaShae Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Canooty?
Yes.
I'm Andrew Sleeper. Any unknown, no unfinished business, I assume? No. Okay, new business. We have one item under new business tonight. Brad Stein, Principal Planner, will make a short presentation and also have the upcoming attendance as well.
Good evening, Brad Stein, Principal Planner. We're here again to talk about a text amendment to the zoning code, Section 31547 for walls and fences. Applicant initiated text amendment to allow electric fences within unlimited industrial I think I'm just going to go straight into the ordinance itself. We'll talk about the language, a little bit of background, as you know. This will be the fourth meeting that we've talked about separate amendments to the code itself and to change the language. I'm going to pull up the ordinance itself and then we'll go to the specific page. What's changed from last meeting to this meeting is Section I and Part II, which is the major change, which is the applicant recommended language. If any portion of the property within which an electric fence is proposed to be installed is adjacent to a residentially zoned parcel, the portion of the proposed fence adjacent to such residentially zoned parcel should not be electrified. Such adjacent fence may contain sensors or other alarm devices. And that's really the major change from the revised change from the last language at your superior prior meeting from the July of that meeting. Going back to the staff report, again, staff is still not in support of any way of the language change to the code. Electric fences, you know, where the real perceived, even not being energized or anything, and having the length increase or the height, excuse me, increased to 10 foot is something that we absolutely don't recommend. And, you know, just the visual effects of electric fence on a neighborhood where the real perceived, you know, creates an image of having military zone or some kind of danger, you know. It's not really the direction the city is looking to go, I believe, it's not the direction the city is looking to move forward in. So again, the staff recommendation is that we recommend the denial of the proposed text change amendment to the city's code of ordinance in Section 31547, walls and fences. And we do this in order to promote and maintain the compatibility of the city's zoning districts and to ensure that the health, safety, and welfare of the residents over Riviera Beach is maintained. The applicant is here tonight. I'm not sure if anyone will be speaking or presenting tonight for Century Security Systems Alliance. But, um, okay. Mr. Wayne Richards for the applicant.
For the applicant.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Wayne Richards. I'm here on behalf of Century Security. With me here tonight are a few people that I do wish to recognize. I have my co-counsel, Sue Delacal. I have Nathan Leabart. Nathan's with Century Security. And of course, we have our good people from Old Dominion right here in our city. We've seen those trucks every day, the beautiful truck trailers, very well kept. John Whitman and his staff. John's here. A little bit of background. We were here on July 11th, but we did not present. We saw our good friends, the Atkins family, and we also saw many people that we know from the neighborhood. And we spoke with them outside, we spoke with them inside, and we spoke with them after the meeting outside. And we decided not to present our proposed ordinance because we wanted to take into account those things and their wishes and their desires. We wanted to take that into account. While we were at the meeting, and we also listened to the comments that this board made, we figured we could come up with a solution that we sincerely thought and still believe would take all of the opposition away. So we went back to the drawing board and we have a new proposal ordinance for your consideration. And I know that you may have seen me here before, but the reason this is under new business is because this particular ordinance has not been before you. This is the first time that you have had the opportunity to see this ordinance. As you are aware, electric fences are currently allowed in the city of Riviera Beach. They have been operating for years. We have heard of, and you have heard of, no accidents, you have heard of no injuries, electric fences are allowed, and they are here today. They've been here for years. What we're asking your support on tonight, if you would, is to allow us to, I'm going to say, update or modernize your current ordinance. Your current ordinance allows electric fences in general industrial zones. When I think of general industrial, quite frankly, I think of heavy machinery. I think of the port of Palm Beach. I think of places where you're, of course, you're concerned about theft, but a person is not going to walk into these locations and pick up a machine length that weighs 10,000 pounds and walk out with it. Where do we have issues and concerns of theft? We have concerns of theft in limited industrial zones where you have outdoor storage. Old Dominion, unfortunately, we don't want to make this, you know, well-known, they are the prime candidate. They have outdoor storage in their containers, so you don't see it, but they have hundreds of thousands of dollars in each of those containers that are driving up in outer streets. Well, the bad guys know that, and they, before this fence went up, they would routinely give this bread and jump over and make their way with it. When the building was under construction, unfortunately, they ripped out the copper and of course, the water was on, so that's, you know, damage and floods. So we're looking to update your current ordinance by allowing electric fences, not only in general industrial, but also in limited industrial. You allow these fences today in general industrial, if it's adjacent, even though it may be adjacent to residential. You allow that today, right now, you have them in the city. We are proposing further limitations. If you allow this in limited industrial where you have the storage, where we have the concern of theft, we are saying that, and we won't tell the bad guys this, but the property line that is adjacent to any residential, and that could be church, daycare, single-family home, if it's zone residential, it will not be electrified. That is, that was really the one thing that I heard. If it's adjacent to residential, we don't want it, we don't want electric fence there. We don't want it. And we said, but you allow it now with safeguards. We have to build a masonry wall. It can only be operated after hours on weekends. They said, yeah, we know all that. Well, we're worried. So we went back and we took out the biggest red pen that's possible and said, we're going to gut this thing. If it's adjacent to residential and if it's in limited industrial, no electric fence. And I, foolishly, I thought we would have had a little parade or something, because that was the concern that everybody expressed. That was the main concern. After the, after the July 11th meeting, we had a, we had a few wonderful conversations downstairs, and we said to ourselves, we're going to have a community meeting. You know what? People are worried, people don't know. Let's give information, let's show them, and listen to them even more. So we printed hundreds of invitations. We sent them to the community adjacent to this one particular site, and only two people showed up. We spent hundreds of dollars at Penner Bread on North Lake. We had peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. We had ham and turkey for the adults. We had refreshments. We had the big screen up. We were ready to show how these fences work. The good news is the nice girl Betty Ann from the church and the pastor of the church were there. They spent about 45 minutes with us, and I will say this unequivocally and very clearly. They said, we are not in opposition. They actually said, we will support you. They said that. And I really wish others had the opportunity to show up that night, because I think it would have really been very positive. So the good news is, we're looking to modify your ordinance to allow these fences in limited industrial, but in limited industrial, if it's adjacent to residential, no, no, no electric fence. Although, if it's in general industrial and it's next to residential, we can do it. You can do it today as a matter of rent. You don't have to ask anyone nicely. You walk up to this floor, the second floor, you get a permit, and you put it up as a matter of rent. This ordinance, though, has even further restrictions. Every time we come here, we just find ways to say yes and yes and yes, hoping we'll say yes. What we've done is, this ordinance, as it's prepared, is a special use exception. So the applicant would have to go up to the city manager and apply. And the city manager would have to determine, one, that reasonable alternative crime prevention methods have been taken. We didn't make that up, quite frankly. We got that from meetings of the police chief. He was here, taking quite a few notes. We also have to show that our landscaping plan is consistent with the city's code. And the city manager, in his or her discretion, can include conditions and further safeguards. Ladies and gentlemen, there are a lot of hoops that an applicant will have to jump through. Applicant will have to go to the city manager, the city manager will have to make a determination that they've done all these other things and it's not working, the landscape plan is consistent, and at that point, the city manager can even add other reasonable conditions, limitations, restrictions. Once an applicant gets past that, they can build their fence. But if it's adjacent to Atkins or the church, it's not electrified. It is not electrified. I don't know what else this applicant can do to try to protect that property and say yes to everything that we've heard. Every objection we've heard, we pretty much said yes to, other than go away. We don't want to disqualify, we don't want to go away, we don't want Old Dominion to possibly go away. They're very important to us here in the city. Have I missed anything that you wish to add? Nathan or Sue?
I think there's probably one thing I'd just add.
This is Nathan Leabart. He is the CFO of my Century Security.
Just thank you for giving me a moment to speak with you. I think just one thing I'd like to address from the staff report is just the history of this fence. And you guys are obviously familiar with this. I've been at the company for a while, so I'm familiar with what happened in the circumstance. And I think the bottom line is, our company made a mistake. And a few, a couple of years ago, when we installed this fence at this location, there was some confusion at the time also, but bottom line is, we knew at the date that we installed it, we didn't have a permit in our hand. It doesn't really matter what we thought was going to happen or what we thought could happen. We didn't do the right thing. And obviously, we regret that. And I personally, given the amount that we've invested in this incident, I wish that we could go back and change that. I'm a lucky man, which is right, but I, just because the history of this site has been so negative, it's worth noting that, you know, this is something we should have done. And, you know, we apologize as strongly as we can, and then help others in the end. So we apologize for what happened back then, so.
Don't leave, Nathan. There's one thing that I omitted, and I thought you were going to say.
Ah, sorry.
They actually took the fence down.
Ah, yes.
Of course, it was, the connections, Mary McKinney had us take the connections down many, 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 many months ago. But I asked Mary myself, Mary, what should we do? And she allowed us to keep it up there during dependency of this. But in coming here, Mr. Canooty, I looked at your words here from the, from the, from last meeting, and there was this concern that, well, gee, these guys put it up there and they shouldn't have put it up. Well, they went ahead and took it down. They said, we don't want to have it over our heads. We're going to spend considerable money, we're going to crow, we're going to apologize, we're going to take the darn thing down. It's totally gone. There's nothing there anymore. So I omitted that, and so did you. It's, it's, you and I can scale it now. So we're asking for some relief. Thank you for your time. Sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we go to board comments, let's go to public comments. Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chair, Board, Staff, Applicant, and Audience, Chief. I'm Juan Atkins. I reside at 1117 West 10th Street, Riviera Beach. I actually live right next to the childcare center. That is across the street from the said property that we're here, here about tonight. I wanted to just talk very briefly about the last meeting. In that last meeting, I made clear my position and our position concerning the fence, as was going to be presented at that time. We were opposed to it, and today, we still remain opposed to the fence. Why? Well, think about impressions. Think about the impression of blight that a electric fence will make on a community. Think about the impressions of, that this area is a crime-ridden area. Think about an impression that is sort of, so to speak, the armpit of the community. I used to live in California, and that's what they referred to, Bakersfield, California, the armpit of the state of California, because all those railroads, you know, everything that no one wanted, they dumped right in Bakersfield. And this city, for the longest time, has realized many elements of that type of syndrome. And at some point, you know, we want to be, we want to build up our community. I don't think anyone who's presented this thing would want an electric fence in their backyard, and we certainly don't want it in our backyard. Now, I understand, you know, the assertion that it's not harmful. You know, we have a business. We talked to the Health Department about it. They, of course, said they would not go on record in taking a public position, but I can tell you that they are concerned about it. And at some point in the future, you know, there could be some sort of regulation or changes in the, in our rules and regulations governing childcare centers, which could affect us. So we are not willing to accept any, albeit maybe small, chance of that happening. Reverend Chandler did, he came, actually, he came by the center just today and spoke to me and asked, have you heard anything about electric fence? And I mentioned him, oh, yeah. As a matter of fact, there's a P&amp;Z meeting tonight. Now, while he did not tell me that, that he indicated that he would support the new ordinance language, he didn't, he also didn't tell me that, that, oh, I didn't hear the same thing that Wayne heard. Wayne says that he offered support. He didn't give me the invitation of that whatsoever. So maybe it's just, you know, a misunderstanding, whatever the case may be, but we, you know, we talked for a minute about it and, you know, and he expressed many of the same concerns that everyone has expressed. I do appreciate the fact that watch, what's the name of the company? Century and Old Dominion have listened to the community, and they attempted to appease the community's interest by making changes to the ordinance and saying yes to many of the things that they just articulated. But I just can't personally, with conscience, support that when I have such a personal stake in, you know, in our childcare center in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tewa Williams. I am a homegrown resident of Riviera Beach, grew up on 10th Street, the street in question. Couple of things I wanted to point out to you all, not quite sure if you're aware, but I did a Google search a few weeks ago, and I basically Googled Century, since that's the company in question. And I wanted to just bring to your attention because what happened, the fence was illegally installed, and then all of a sudden, it was brought to zoning and it was told to take down, they were told to take it down. But Century has a history of doing this. It looks like, just from my search, I found three instances where fences in El Paso, Texas, there were eight fences illegally installed, in Ocala, Florida, fences illegally installed, and then the company would come before the local zoning board to try to get the ordinance exchanged. And also in Marietta, Georgia. That was just eight, just from a quick Google search. There's even an article, a news article that I have that I could share, don't have it with you. But just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you're aware, but I did a Google search because we have a prime interest in the company and what's going on in our community. We don't want electric fences near us, near our children, near our neighborhoods. It's more than just, of course, the first main concern was what was right there in our backyard, but I'm just thinking the overall view, like my brother mentioned, we just don't want that type of view in Riviera Beach. Century is located in South Carolina, so they're going to pack up and leave, and we have to stay and deal with this. So my, my urge to you is to just kind of reconsider, maybe do a little more digging around just to see what you can find out, and you'll find many instances where this has happened in other municipalities similar to ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Chief, I noticed you're here, and as a courtesy, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Clarence Williams, Police Chief. Historically, the issue of electric fences has been vetted by this body and the City Council. We have an existing city ordinance that governs and regulates electric fences. Many of these same arguments and discussions were held when we passed that ordinance. And as a result of that process, our city said electric fences could only be deployed in certain zoning areas in this community. That effort was supported not only by the Police Department, but by the Fire Department in terms of use. I am concerned about the proliferation of electric fences. I have no doubt that Old Dominion is probably going to be a good corporate partner, but that's Old Dominion. If we do this, not only will Old Dominion, but every other business that feels that it wants to erect an electric fence will have the ability to do that with the restrictions, the new restrictions, and I'll talk about those in a second. From a administrative standpoint, who will monitor the proliferation of electric fences? Community Development doesn't have the resources to do that. The Code Department doesn't have the resources to do that. The Police Department doesn't have the ability to do that. As these things go up across our city, who's going to be responsible for making certain that they're operating the way that they need to be operating, that they're not connected to, as the new language suggests, any residential areas? What happens when a business closes? How will we make certain that that equipment is dismantled, that it's dismantled properly, that it's dismantled timely? Or do we simply let the electric fence just linger there, serving no purpose? This particular company did not explore the alternatives. I remember Old Dominion going through our site review process, and as we do with most of them, there is input from law enforcement, and law enforcement prescribed specific SEPTED, I'm sorry about the acronym, that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, methods to safeguard and protect that property that have proven to be successful for other properties throughout our community. Unlike Fire, whose recommendations are codified, you can't get in this building and occupied unless there's one of those signs over the door. Their industry was a, was a bit smarter than law enforcement. All of law enforcement's suggestions are just that, suggestions and recommendations, and in a site review, the builder or the new entity has the ability to say, no, we don't want to do that because it's going to be cause prohibitive for us. It's something that our industry has to work on. But those kinds of things that were suggested that would safeguard this property and were not found and utilized, some of the same sorts of things that are now in the new language, the first revision, were the things that we talked about. So, and they mentioned having to have passed that test. So if that test is good enough now for what is being proposed, it should have been good enough for this particular business in the beginning. I'm convinced that it's going to have an adverse impact on, on city operations, financial impact on city operations, because we're going to have to monitor these things. It's going to tax and already overtax city services, police, fire, code, CD, as we try to manage this growth of electric fences and the possibilities. So I, I think that, that covers, you know, all of my points. So I, I think that, that covers, you know, all of my points, uh, as to the new language. Uh, I also see in the new language that it talks about the electric fence, or the fence will not be electrified, uh, if it's adjacent to, uh, residential properties, uh, but it has the ability to have sensors and all of those kinds of things. Uh, those are the same sorts of suggestions and same sorts of things that would be available for fencing that would, uh, secure the entire perimeter of a, of a business. Uh, so, uh, this particular company has not and did not take the advice of the law enforcement professionals in its community. It experienced some difficulties as a result of that. Uh, those things have been resolved and, uh, is, in my opinion, uh, not the best way for, uh, our community to go.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to, uh, board comments now. Uh, Mr. Hamilton?
At this time, I don't have any comments.
Ms. Jackson, do you have any questions or comments?
I think, um, the chief probably answered a lot of the questions that I had. Um, do we have any statistics on how many break-ins prior to the fence being installed and then how many occurred after the fence, uh, was installed? And then have the company, uh, used any roving guards or security in the past?
Hello, I'm John Whitman with Old Dominion Freight Lines. I've been the ma- the manager there since we opened up at the new location. Uh, most of the incidents we had, actually, all of the incidents were prior to the fence being, being put up. Since the fence went up, even though it wasn't electrified, I'm not sure if that's the correct term, though, uh, we've had no trouble whatsoever. So, um, since the fence went up, even, I think it acted a lot like a deter, a deterrent, because nobody wants to be the guy or girl who goes up to an electric fence to find out if it works. But since then, absolutely nothing. Uh, the fence came all the way down, it's been a, a month now, Sean, and knock on wood, it's still been quiet. So, did we think the fence worked? Yes, even from just the deter, from the deterrent? Yes, ma'am. Wasn't sure about the second part of the question.
Have you used any security in the past?
Uh, when we first started getting break, broken into a lot, we had a guard twenty-four, seven. Then once the fence was erected, we only went to the guard on the weekends, like from Friday night to Monday morning, because that's usually our quiet time, there's not as much traffic. Usually we're just Monday through Friday and it slows down a lot over the weekends. So, and even now, we still have a guard Friday night, a Monday morning.
Is there any pictures of this fence?
Uh, staff probably does.
Right, just to clarify, this is a citywide ordinance, this isn't specific to one site, but I can show you a picture of that specific fence if you'd like to see it.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Jackson, may I just comment while you pull it up on the, on the view?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, thank you, Brad, for pulling it up. And that's my first comment here. The electric fence, as you see, it's every eight inches. So when we speak about the view, and that, they're, they're separated by eight inches. Obviously, a human body can't fit through an eight-inch gap, but it's not as though they're every, like a chain link fence, you see a chain fence to the right, um, but they separated by eight inches. So, it's not as though it's an opaque fence.
Okay, so this is just one picture, and let me go through these pictures, there's about twelve pictures, I'll just go through them all quick. Something that you can also notice is that the fence, not only is it a legal electric fence, it was also legally too high, okay, for the code. So this is a picture, I don't know if you can notice that tree right there when the fence was installed? The tree was hat racksed and completely shaved off because they can't have, um, plant material or anything else touching it, you know, it'll close the circuit, the circuit, so that it would make it nullified. So they basically completely, you know, mutilated their landscaping to install this also at the time. But again, that's just some components, just some other components showing where it's connected or how it's, that's basically all it takes, is if it's closed and ceramic, you know, and it's ground, not grounded in any way, then that's all it takes, is two wires, basically, to energize sections like that. It, it taken, you know, an electrician or somebody who's qualified could hook it up and disassemble it in minutes or less, okay? These are just more pictures, we're just going through real quick. There's one of the signs that you can see on the side. Okay, so that's just a really quick, but again, like I said, the fence is currently down. And again, this ordinance isn't particular to this one piece of property, this ordinance is a citywide, something that the city, I don't believe is the direction that we want to go. We want to try to, you know, would, would a gun turn, it'd be a very good tur, you know, deterrent from showing, or people coming out of your property. Of course, I know that's probably a ridiculous statement, this isn't the direction the city's trying to go, okay?
Mr. Chairman? Any, any other comments, Mr. Chairman?
If you allow, I promise, if you allow, I promise I'll take less than two minutes. A few comments have been made that, um, I could probably shed actual facts to the comments. Uh, so if you allow me less than two minutes, I can sort of correct that.
Two minutes.
Thank you. Um, Century Security has over three thousand fences, the United States of America, over three thousand. And they, I suppose, in half an hour go lower their compliance issues from before the current ownership, uh, acquired or took over the company. And they are going back and they are cleaning up their compliance issues. But over three thousand fences, of course, there should be zero that were done incorrectly, but it's an extremely, extremely small percentage. And they have a department that, whose sole task is to clean up the compliance issues of their predecessors. Proliferation, you've had this ordinance for years now? There are three! There are three! There are three fences! And general industrial, there'll be no proliferation? We don't have to worry about these popping up everywhere? And the new ordinance that we're proposing has significant hoops you have to jump through. So the, the, the argument is about proliferation, um, I, I, I'm not, we're not concerned about proliferation. There are three currently. And you can give it as a matter of right. In general industrial, you go to the second floor and you request a permit. Also, these are leased, these are very expensive to have each month, very, very expensive. So if a company closes, gee whiz, no one's gonna leave, Century Security's not gonna leave tens and not hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment there that no one's paying for every month. Uh, it took hours to disassemble, you don't plug this in, it, this uses solar cells and a battery, and electrician will not do this in minutes. So thi- this is a pretty, there was quite, quite a few things there that just aren't correct. But we don't have to worry about proliferation, there are three of them that we know of. Uh, and we're now proposing significant limitations, significant hoops that a company has to jump through. I don't think we're gonna have these all over the place. I, I asked Old Dominion, I asked Old Dominion, a- and I attended meetings with the police department, I said, well, help me understand, what are the things that you guys did not do that you should have done, that you were told to do? They're not aware of it. And I know in our meetings, we spoke very much about the high mast lighting that they have, the church loves the high mast lighting because it, it, it reduces, as well as the fence reduces the theft to their property because it keeps people away.
That's, uh, two minutes. Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
I don't have much to say, I think I'm opposed to it. I'm always gonna be opposed to it. I'm opposed to it for, it's not what we want to look like, and I'm also opposed when one ordinance is written for a specific company, that scares me. Second of all, I just cannot see myself, I mean, an electrified fence, be installed here, residential, and we're talking one location, but, you know, it's all over the city. Um, and I'm just opposed to it.
Okay. Uh, I guess my comment is that, uh, the city professionals, community development, police and fire, uh, are opposed, and I think we need to strongly consider what our professionals have to say about this particular subject. So I'd like to, uh, if there's no other further board comments, Mr. Hamilton? Uh, I'd like to call for a motion.
Um, Mr. Chair, I motion that, um, this board, the Planning and Zoning Board, denied the, um, said applicant, uh, code, city code ordinance text amendment revision section thirty-one dash five four seven.
Do you have a second?
I need to read the term. Re, okay, I'm sorry. Remise section thirty-one dash five four seven, walls and fences, proposed amendment or permitted zoning district, electrified, electric fence used within the city to include limited industrial zoning district.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the applicant. Uh, call the roll.
Arthur Hamilton?
abstain.
Point board, you're not allowed to abstain unless you have direct conflict.
Would you repeat that, please?
Repeat the motion or repeat why you cannot abstain.
I did not hear you.
As an active voting board member, you're not allowed to abstain unless you have a direct conflict with the specific item.
Just let me clarify one thing. Uh, the motion is to deny the applicant, a yes vote supports the motion.
I abstain, I have personal reasons.
Ms. Stubbs?
It has to be a direct conflict, uh, Mr. Hamilton, with the item, is it the parties or is the, the issue, it is not personal, you're an active board member here in the day, so you need to vote, please.
I know the, um, the, you with the parties and, uh, that is against, and I vote with lady conflict be challenged.
Are you familiar with the parties, Mr. Hamilton? I mean, I, I don't.
Um, I've known the Atkins, I know the parents of the Atkins, I've had family members to attend the daycare, I have a cousin who's a good friend of, uh, not particularly, but they seem to be viewed by persons bringing this as, I don't know.
Okay, so as a party order, if I may speak on brass knife, personal plan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so you realize they're not the applicant, they're just citizens here? And as a person on the dais, they are your constituents, okay? Very good. You understand that, right? So right now, the applicant is Century Systems LLC, who came in and they're, initiated text change amendment to our city code ordinance. They, they are not the applicant and they're just citizens here speaking tonight against the fence.
And I understand that, but because of my personal knowledge of the people speaking against this, I would definitely have a bias. And that particular bias, open bias, would move me not to abstain.
Ms. Stubbs, do we just continue?
You can't continue, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Call the roll. Continue, call under roll.
Yes.
Ms. Sheebrooks?
Yes.
Ever Canadian?
Yes.
That is approval with Mr. Hamilton stating due to direct conflict.
Uh, correct record, there's no direct conflict.
The board member stated there was.
Correct.
So it is under his.
I'd like to, I'd like Ms. Stubbs to comment on direct conflict.
In general, that is not the type of direct conflict, but since the board member has stated in his opinion that it is a direct conflict for him, then we'll let this tension take place and based on the vote, move forward.
Okay, very good. Okay, just for the record, clarify. Okay, uh, general discussion, any public comments? Staff?
Uh, yes, Jeff Yagman complains of administrator, um, this is the one edition, uh, resolution, number two four dash thirteen, uh, and I just wanted to briefly brief and describe it.
Ms. Stubbs?
It has indeed provided, um, the general public the opportunity to speak specifically at council meetings or other public meetings on items that were on the separate agenda.
Well, Mr. Yagman has pretty much summed it up. For the title, um, basically, this was a resolution that was, uh, recently passed, uh, by the city council, um, along with a policy, uh, that is attached regarding the public's right to be heard. Uh, there is a section of the Florida statutes that recently the legislature, you know, is codified, uh, in the law, uh, allowing a public right to be heard on certain matters. It doesn't affect this board as much, uh, because this board makes recommendations to the city council and the public is also granted the opportunity to be heard at that time, uh, before a final vote. Uh, also, this board has, of course, generally given the public a right to be heard. So it's given to this board more so as a courtesy, uh, just to make you aware of the new law that will take place effective October first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments from the Planning and Zoning Board? Mr. Hamilton?
No comments at this time.
Ms. Jackson?
No comment.
Okay. Brooke?
No comments.
Okay. Mr. Yagman, do you have any updates or anything?
No updates, no correspondence. Our next scheduled meeting is October tenth, followed by October twenty-fourth, the January twenty-sixth, so that's the time.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, make one comment on the record. Just Yagman, I'd like to make one comment on the record. I'm not sure what the status of the Marriott Ocean Palms is at this, whether they're, uh, completely finished, uh, but one of the stipulations that we put into the, uh, final approval of that was we told them that they did not have to put the decorative facade on the oceanfront building because it wouldn't be seen from, uh, the road, uh, but we did require them to put the decorative facade on the west buil-, uh, the west wall of that building. Uh, and like I say, I don't know where they are in their final process of finishing that, but I'd like to make sure that that happens.
Okay, Stubbs, follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? Motion?
A second.
I guess the whole may be.
Well, actually, I was just saying, the, the security's running out, so if you said seven thirty?
No, you said the second.
I said, I said.
That's what I said, I told it, I said, they tried. Do everything possible.
Good relief.
Code section.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm helping you, you know, doing the right thing. I'm pretty good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see.
Okay.